Making a mess.
Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. For those who are able, please rise for the pledge. If I ask you remain standing after the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's take a moment to remember a couple of longtime Madison residents we lost over the past few weeks. Thelma Trustee, lifelong Madison resident, passed away on December 30th, age of ninety-three. She was known by many names, of course, Thelma, mother, grandma, Mother Thelma, TA. Thelma, with all those names, has left an incredible imprint on the hearts of all that knew her. And anyone who attended events at Rexford Tucker Senior Apartments, couldn't miss her because she was the one working room with a big smile, giving out candy. And I had to check my title at the door because she truly was the mayor of Chateau Theory. She was also always, even right up to a year ago, first one on the dance floor when the music started. So I had many a dance with Thelma. And you would also see her at all the chicken and fish fries at Bethel AME. When I got my meal there, I would tell her, please get the dessert, I don't need it. And I would get home and there'd be extra desserts in the bag because Thelma had to do it. And she would also always say, Mayor, I'm keeping an eye on you. So she was born nineteen thirty-one, North Carolina, moved to Madison as a young child. When her mother passed away in nineteen forty-one, she was raised by Aunt Bert and Uncle Raymond. Graduated Madison High School. Thelma excelled not only as a track star, but also majorette, radiating joy and energy that drew people to her, which she did right up until her deathbed. Her love for music and dance was a reflection of a vibrant spirit. And after high school, she worked for Bell Labs. We also lost Elizabeth Betty Iannarone, mother of Madison pharmacy owner and Madison volunteer Frank Iannarone. She died on January one at age eighty-five. Born in thirty-nine, grew up in East Orange and Springfield. And after graduation, went to Catherine Gibb Secretary of School, met her husband Frank Senior on a blind date. They lived in Hillside, then settled in Farm Park where they raised their son and daughter. And she was a stay-at-home mom for many years before working at Macy's as legal secretary and then also various pharmaceutical companies. She was also a dedicated volunteer at JBWS Jersey Battered Women's Shelter for over twenty years. In addition to her son Frank, she's survived by her daughter Krista, their spouses, along with five grandchildren. And then also Joanne Marie Benedict, lifelong Madison resident, died on December thirtieth, age eighty. Survived by her son Christopher and his wife Donna, and her longtime companion Arthas Scobbo, and five grandchildren, five great-grandchildren. Joanne was a graduate of Madison High School, began her career at Chubb Life Insurance, and then Nabisco, and then later Aetna in Placipity. And after twenty-five years there, retired and helped people as a credit counselor. And she was a huge fan of Elvis Presley, taking many trips to Grayson in Memphis with her companion Arthur. So let's take a moment to remember Thelma Trustee Betty Iannarone, Joanne Benedict, and let us also remember those who've lost their homes, and think about the first responders fighting the overwhelming fires, and all those who have died during the fires in Southern California. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all to our first regular meeting of the new year after a reorganization meeting. And apologize, we were delayed a little bit, executive. And as we enter this new year, we look back on another great Madison holiday season that we just wrapped up. We kicked off the season on the day after Thanksgiving with the amazing parade and tree lighting. Store owners welcomed shoppers from near and far throughout December. Shoppers were also greeted with music on Thanksgiving weekend, while some lucky shoppers were surprised with kiss certificates from the DC Santa's on the weekends leading up to Christmas. And then on December nineteenth, just ahead of the winter solstice, we gathered at the tree at Waverly Place for interfaith gathering, recognizing the day when the darkness is the longest. And then on the twenty-ninth, on the fifth day of Hanukkah, we came together for what is now a multi-decade Madison tradition of lighting the menorah. And today, the signal at the official end of holiday season has come, as the lights are now off of the tree on Waverly Place, and the tree will soon be going on to another life. And on January second, as I mentioned, we held our annual reorganization meeting as council members Eric Range and Melissa Hanahan started their new terms. Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill gave the oath of office before she had to head out to DC to take her own oath for a new term. Actually, last Monday, I attended a Chatham Borough reorganization meeting. Mikey Sherrill was not able to attend, but she had a great video that was done in the back of Hartley Dodge. So Madison was there with Mikey in spirit. And I've said this before, that, you know, no one does reorganization meetings better than we do. Starting with Geraldine Rockefeller Dodge, who gave us this great room and the great building to have the meeting in, the clerk Liz Osborne, who has to manage all the reappointments and the many moving parts, some that I make more than often, or all too often, Michael Palissier in the back there for supporting logistics, and also many of the staff in this building stepped up to get things ready for the setup and cleanup. And for those that missed the meeting, we brought back the Spotlight Kids, who were here in December for the annual Drew Forrest Carol, and they returned to do an amazing job on the National Anthem at the opening meeting. So thank you for all that made it a special day. Now I'm gonna come down below in just a second here. A few years ago? A few years ago, I created the Mayor's Hero Award. This was recognizing residents who stepped forward in a single act when help was needed. And this was followed by what is the Mayor's Hero Legacy Award. This is to recognize those whose work has made a lasting difference in our community. Past recipients include Carmen Toto Junior, Gary Ruckleshouse, Woody Kirkus Lager, Kathy Cultis, Bob Cultis, Father George Hunt, and Jack Lutz. So tonight, we're gonna recognize a new legacy hero, someone who has quietly but impactfully made a difference in our community and with others. Come on down and... Martin Heller, come on up. I've got to say a few words before I give you this award, though, Martin. So today, we are recognizing, we can spin around so we can get you on... Yep. He's a very modest man, as you can tell. But today, we are recognizing longtime Madison resident Martin Heller as Mayor's Madison Legacy Hero. And you truly have been a hero, a quiet one at that. And because you've certainly never done this for recognition, you have done it to make a difference in the community. And even to the fact that we had planned to do this at a reorganization meeting, but you were off helping someone, and so you couldn't be here. Martin, you have a lifelong record of giving to make a difference, but my first experience was in the time after Superstorm Sandy. And as people in the audience may know, that we adopted the town of Union Beach as they recovered from the storm. They were devastated. So much of the support came from Martin. He supported the drive to raise funds so they could buy lumber for restoration. But then the word came back that the funds were a challenge because they couldn't get lumber. So what did Martin do? He arranged to get the lumber there with truckloads, with plywood, so they could start the repairs on the house, all delivered to Union Beach. That next summer, we started a program to send Union Beach children to camp. Martin, again, was there to give the children an experience of a lifetime as they were still recovering from the devastation. Again, done very quietly. I think he even said, don't tell anyone. I want to be anonymous, but here I'm letting it all out. And then, when timeout, the adult daycare center was about to close, Martin was there to give life to a program that was so important to those taking care of their elderly parents. It gave the ability for that program to last many more years. And of course, there's the latest act of generosity, saving the Masonic Lodge, a building that will be celebrating its two-hundredth anniversary. Your one million dollar donation has given this building a new life, not only preserving the streetscape, but also given us a new senior center within the building. The building is now the Mark Heller Center in honor of your late son, someone who was inspiration to many. And the senior center will be the Peggy Heller Senior Center in memory of your wife. And I know until her passing in two thousand nineteen, she was right at your side, making a difference for so many, a legacy hero in her own right. So Martin, I want to thank you for doing everything you do to make a better life for all.
Thank you all. Thank you. I'm very proud of this award, and I thank, and I thank the municipality, the members of the mayor and council for their recognition of my efforts that I tried to make Madison a better community, and it is a good community. And I want to tell you something kind of exciting. I, with the mayor's help, met with a noble laureate, who's a friend of mine, who wanted to move to Summit. And last Saturday, I had him come visit Madison. And I asked the mayor to come to talk with this couple, a noble laureate. And he agreed to move to Summit. He made a bid this morning on a house. And he's a partner with another noble laureate. And if we could land two noble laureates in Madison, not Summit, what a bonanza that is, what a compliment it is for this community. So I hope he gets...
Yep, we hope that contract, the offers accepted.
Anyway, thank you all for your recognition. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Take care.
Thank you, Martin.
I think we should call it a night at this point. But we won't. We will go on to reports from committees. Public safety, I've got to change the order here. Finance, Borough Clerk, Council President Erling.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the Borough Clerk's report. The two thousand twenty-five June primary this year will be rescheduled from June third to June tenth. That's the Republic Law twenty twenty-four, Section C one oh seven, in observance of the Jewish holiday of Shavuot. Candidates for municipal office and county committee must file nominating petitions in the office of the Borough Clerk by four PM on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. That's the seventy-first day preceding the day of the June primary election for the general election. Please contact the Borough Clerk with any questions. And here in town, cat and dog licenses renewals are underway. Licenses must be renewed by the end of January. Moving on to finance, we have an important reminder from the Tax Department, the first quarter property taxes are due February first. We are pleased to announce that we collected ninety-nine point sixty-four percent of the twenty twenty-four property taxes. Special thanks to Chrissy and Hattie in the Tax Collection Department for doing such a great job in twenty twenty-four. The Finance Department has two important projects in the works. Over the coming weeks, Finance will be working on both the annual debt statement and the annual financial statements. The debt statement shows the amount of municipal debt, including school debt, as a percentage of total assessments of property in the borough. The annual financial statements are the first documents that reflect the actual financial performance of the borough in the prior year. These documents get further refined and become our municipal audit. The annual financial statements, or AFS, also help us during the annual budget process as they give us fund balance performance for the prior year. So speaking of the budget, I have said before that budget season is here, but Jim wants to say emphatically, budget season is here. So that's in bold. We have no presentations this evening, but to reiterate, our budget schedule will look like this going forward. On the twenty-seventh, our next meeting, there'll be a presentation from Public Works, the Water Utility, Electric Utility, and Utility Fund Balances. On February tenth, there will be an initial municipal budget review and presentation from the Fire Department. On February twenty-fourth, we will have department head presentations, although I believe that meeting we discussed is actually on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of February. And on March twenty-fourth, we will have a final budget presentation, as well as a strategic planning discussion and introduction of the budget. Lastly, on April twenty-eighth, we will have a budget hearing and a vote for adoption. As we've mentioned before, this year, the borough is under state review for our municipal budget, so it is possible that the introduction and adoption dates may change. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. And before we go on to the next report, I just realized in my excitement to recognize Martin Heller, I forgot to announce the Employees of the Month. So the Employees Month of January are John Lynn Steinheimer and Matthew Morrow. They are EMTs that recently responded to a difficult call where they use their very special knowledge to recognize a serious problem with the patient. And their quick action and recognition of this problem saved the patient's life. It was recognized by the Atlantic Health also. So if you see them, please congratulate them as our Employees of the Month. And now, we will go to Public Safety, Mr. Range. No, we'll go to Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Landrigan. We'll get this.
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Public Safety. It will be corrected at the next desk. So take three, Public Safety, Mr. Landrigan.
Alrighty. From the Police Department, police personnel are currently in the process of completing full department training on the use of force addendum C, which encompasses de-escalation. The Police Department administrative personnel are currently in the process of completing mandatory year-end reports that include submissions to Morris County. The Police Department has installed new interview, new interview equipment for both the first and second floor interview rooms that were part of the two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan. The Police Department is in the process of two new patrol vehicles, is in possession of two new patrol vehicles that were ordered as part of the two thousand twenty-four purchase and are currently being outfitted. And finally, Police Command, Madison Police Command staff will be meeting at the end of the month with public school officials as part of the quarterly district security meeting. Okay, from the Fire Department, the two thousand twenty-four fire department responses included two thousand one hundred sixty-four incidents. This included nine hundred and eighty-one fire calls and one thousand one hundred eighty-three EMS calls. As a reminder, during the year of two thousand twenty-four, the Fire Department took over EMS. For the month of December, the Fire Department responded to two hundred and twelve EMS calls with ninety-three patients transported to the hospital. On December twelfth, the Fire Department responded to an assist at a second alarm fire in Morris Township. An accidental fire at that location severely burned a contractor. On January ninth, the Fire Department hosted another successful blood drive. A total of thirty-four pints of blood were donated. And finally, the Fire Department is getting ready to roll out their new residential knockbox program. Presently, you have probably seen these knockboxes outside of businesses and schools. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Range.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Engineering Department this evening, the Cook Avenue Parking Reconstruction Project is largely complete, and a reminder that the lot is fully open. Final construction and planting of the rain gardens will be completed as weather permits. The installation of the solar carport project at the MRC is moving forward. Construction permitting is almost complete, and we anticipate construction to begin in approximately thirty to forty-five days. Emergency repairs to the DPW garage roof trusses has been complete, and along with much of the work for the repairs of the roof of the Water and Light Building. The Engineering Department is also working on preparing documents and grant submissions for several upcoming projects, including the next phase of the Memorial Park Trail improvements, traffic safety improvements at several locations throughout town, and bid documents for interior repairs to the Water and Light Building, with a bid packet for that project expected to be released in the spring. From DPW this evening, a reminder that your Christmas trees can be put to the curb for pickup by the DPW. They should be free of tinsel lights and other ornaments. And because, remember, they are not collected by the garbage pickup, they are recycled here by the DPW Department. Pickup will continue through January thirty-first. Residents can also bring their Christmas trees and other yard rays to the recycling center on Saturday, February first, from eight AM to two thirty PM. To help us keep the ice enjoyable for all at the Rosedale Skating Pond, we ask that no one throw or leave anything on the ice, including trash, tools, or other items. If you do clear ice, if you do clear the ice of snow, please shovel it to the sides. Do not leave piles of snow on the ice as they create an uneven skating surface. Remember, the rink is only open and available for skating when the flag is raised and closes nightly at ten PM. You can also check the status of the ice at rosnad.org. And last Monday, January sixth, and on Saturday, January eleventh, there were two minor snow events here in the borough. Crews were able to pre-treat roadways to prevent icing conditions. And lastly, tonight, from the Building Department, in the month of December, the Building Department processed one hundred and fifty permits, which were prepared with a construction cost valued at nine point two million dollars. Fifty certificate of approvals were issued. Ten certificates of occupancy were also issued, including four for new single-family homes, and six residential additions. Five hundred inspections were booked and completed, and forty-five Oprah requests were processed. That's all tonight from Building Engineering and DPW. Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, let's put us.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, public. From the Water Department, the Water Department continues to replace meters around town, additionally focusing on the troubled or bad plumbing sites now, while Meter Tech continues their scheduled replacements. To date, there's been five thousand, approximately five thousand meters replaced and changed. There's four hundred left to go. Some of them have challenges inside the structures that need to be addressed by plumbers. Hopefully, that'll be finalized in the first half of twenty twenty-five. Curve boxes have been dug and replaced at seven locations to aid in the replacement of water meters. Testing and sample valves are being replaced in the wells as regular maintenance, along with air filters. A new CL-two induction line was installed at Ewell. Very exciting. Six-inch water main break was dug and repaired on Hoyt Street. The break was a crack around the main at a service connection due to ground movement from frost. The repair clamp and service tap were used and service was reconnected. Several large meters have been replaced. Upcoming events and activities, water service replacements are scheduled for this week on Rose Avenue. Another thing that we have in the planning stage is considering the potential developments at Drew and Geralda and elsewhere around the borough, a review of the borough's water utility, long-term capacity and infrastructure to support growth, will be under update planning review. This will be part of the Utility Committee's meetings. From the Electric Utility, standby was called out eight times. Transformer was replaced on Ridgedale. Disconnected power to a house on North Street because it was flooded due to a broken water pipe. Since the last council meeting, all the lights on the Cook Avenue parking lot are now up and running. Hopefully, you'll notice the classic historic-looking lights over there. It's a beautiful improvement. Relay upgrade of circuits at the Kings Road substation continues. Crews are doing markouts, responding to emergency repairs, replacing lights and new connections when we receive a cut in the card. Upcoming events, EV fast chargers will be installed in Lot Three. Schedule is already in place. And the Electric Utility has removed re- And the Electric Utility has removed wreaths and lights from the posts, and as you heard before, they took down the Christmas lights on the Tru Young Waverly Place, unfortunately. And one more thing, Mayor, from the Recreation Activity Committee. Councilman Range talked about the flooding of the Rosedale Skating Rink. A number of the community groups that actually skate in the schools have been out there practicing, which is fantastic. The ski club started a couple of weeks ago. The registration is complete with 250 skiers and 40 chaperones. It's a fantastic program. I have been through it with my kids. And the spring schedules have already been set and distributed to all the relevant groups. And as of the end of 2024, the MRC user fees had been totally collected. That's all.
Thank you very much. Great to hear about ice skating.
Yeah, it's ready, Ray. Let's go, Ray.
Community Affairs, Ms. Honahan.
Thank you, Mayor. Downtown Development Commission will have its reorganization meeting on January 16th this week, Thursday. It is open to the public and is held in just down the hall. Planning is also underway for the Madison Green and Clean, which will be held on Saturday, April 26th, and more information will follow. The Chamber of Commerce will hold a fundraiser for a comedy night on January 21st. It's a bring-your-own booze and food, but it's a comedy show on the 21st, and tickets are $35. Supposed to be a great show. Rose City Chocolate Walk, February 8th at 1:00. Taste of Madison, February 24th at 6:00 at the Madison Hotel. Those tickets are available at Gary's Wine Marketplace and online at garyswine.com. The Madison Community Arts Center is as busy as ever with the Wednesday Open Mic Series continuing in '25. There is a live music and pop-up shop showcase which continues on January 18th at 7:00 p.m. The Film Society of Summit will be showing the Benjamin Netanyahu documentary, The BB Files, on Sunday, January 19th. There's a Red Cross Blood Drive on January 29th, and later that day, the Madison Environmental Commission will present a lecture on, oops, what to do with invasive plants purchased at garden centers. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And for those that are doing Dry January, I guess you can bring your own soft drinks, too.
Yes.
And Health, Mr. Forte.
Thank you, Mayor. During the month of December, the Health Department inspected 35 retail food establishments, investigated five complaints, and one communicable disease. A rabies clinic was held with 67 total dogs and cats vaccinated. As a reminder, all dogs and cats must be licensed with the borough, which is something that popped up when people came to get their animals vaccinated. They weren't licensed. For information on pet licensing, please visit www.rosenet.org. The Health Department is seeing an increase in respiratory illnesses with emergency room visits increasing. The Health Department is still offering flu vaccine for individuals who are interested. Please contact, please call 973-593-3079 for more information. The Health Department would also like to remind individuals that the following actions are protective against bird flu. There have been no cases identified in New Jersey, and risk to humans is considered low, but it has occurred in other places in the country. Avoid contact with dead birds. Call 1-877-WARN, Warn, DEP, to report sick or dead birds. Do not ingest products made from raw milk, and avoid feeding cats and other pets raw meat. Cats are known to be susceptible to the bird flu, which they can pick up from the raw meat. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
We're now on our first of two invitations for public comment. This one is limited to our two discussion items or the resolutions on our consent agenda. So, these are the one items you can comment on. We're gonna have a presentation on the Police Department Arrive Together Program, and then we have a presentation on the Parks Master Plan Design Follow-Up. And these are the resolutions that you may comment on. And just, I didn't read, at the reorganization meeting, I did not read the titles of resolutions and consent, because those are all routine ones, and now we are into the less routine one category. Resolution 40 is appointing truck driver Joseph Forte to position of Equipment Operator 2, and this is at salary based on the collective bargaining agreement. Resolution 41 is appointing Thomas Hunt to the position of Public Safety Telecommunications Officer, also consistent with collective bargaining agreement. Resolution 42 is authorizing renewal of shared service agreement with Senior Center of Chatham to provide senior programs and also supporting some of the capital improvements. Resolution 43 is approving license application by Drew University on various dates. Resolution 44 is approving the Little League Parade to be held on Saturday, April 5th at 12:00 noon. Mark your calendar. Resolution 45 is authorizing annual stipend of $3,000 to Bonnie Mokehi for assuming additional duties to implement and enforce tree protection permit process. Resolution 46 is approving a special event permit to allow use of Memorial Park Parking Area by Karen Giridano on various dates in April through December this year. Resolution 47, authorizing a contract for motor gasoline through Morris County Co-op Pricing Council not to exceed $150,000 funding available through the 2025 budget. Resolution 48 is award of special motor contract for rock salt to Atlantic Salt of Lowell, Massachusetts, also under the Morris County Co-op, amount not to exceed $120,000 funded through the 2025 budget. Resolution 50 is amending Resolution 13-2025, which was authorizing establishment of petty cash funds for borough custodians, and this one is eliminating the Public Works Petty Cash Fund as it's no longer needed. Resolution 51 is approving raffle for Madison High School PTSO, March 12th. Resolution 52 is appointing Hillary Barbosa to the position of Technical Assistant to Construction Code Official, known as Taco, in the Building Department, and this is an annual salary of $60,000. Resolution 53 is approving a film permit for Winger Productions for filming. It was on January 11th on 159 Garfield Avenue. So, you may comment on those resolutions or the two discussion items. If you wish to comment on those, you step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and then the item you are commenting on, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we do give you a one-minute grace and stop you at four. There will be another comment period late in the meeting when you can comment on any topic. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. Chief Misha, the Arrive Together Program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, we have a small, small video, just to give you a background and overview of the program that we'll play for you. Right. So, the Arrive Program, as you've seen on the video here, there are, there's a lot of towns in the state that have it. We're fortunate enough in Madison to be one of those towns. A little brief history, the Arrive Program stands for the Alternate, Alternative Responses to Reduce Instances of Violence and Education. The program recognizes the importance of addressing mental health concerns with compassion, understanding, and specialized expertise. This program pairs a mental health clinician, which we use from MHA, or the Mental Health Association of New Jersey, with a police officer to be dispatched on certain categorized calls, specifically to calls where the patient is in mental crisis. And only when the scene is safe, the call is then turned over to the clinician to work with the patient and provide resources and guidance to get the necessary treatment that the patient needs. So, the history with the Arrive Program in Madison, late 2021, former councilwoman Deb Cohen reached out to me and said, "Hey, John, you should look at a program that is in West Orange." She gave me a link, she's a teacher there, and, which was later found to be the Arrive Program, where she said, "You know, I think it's pretty, it can be pretty beneficial in town where the mental health clinician goes on calls with the police officer." So, I thought it was, you know, first I heard of it, so we did some research on it, and in the coming months, I was in communication with Assistant Prosecutor Meg Rodriguez from Morris County and other county chiefs to get the discussion going, see if we can get something similar and start it in Morris County. What we were seeing post-COVID was, in town here and throughout the county, even throughout the state, that a large number of our calls were for mental, mental health crisis, people needing assistance. And I felt that if there was more that we can do as police officers and police leaders to better help our residents and better equip our officers to handle these type of calls, I was in full support of it. Largely, I wanted to provide my officers with another tool in their tool belt to handle these types of calls more effectively and to assist our residents in getting all the help that they need. I also saw the immediate need of ongoing training for our officers to better, in better, to better deal with these calls. So, in mid-2023, as you saw on the, on this, on the video here, the Prosecutor's Office notified us that the Arrive Program was expanding statewide, and Madison was one of the first on the list to be a pilot program in our county. This program is fully funded, as you all know, by Department of Human Services grant money with no cost to participating towns. To participate and be considered, though, the Prosecutor's Office looks at the following: population of the town, the volume of calls concerning emotionally disturbed, suicidal, et cetera, categorized calls, the interest of department leadership with having a clinician onboard with a, with an officer to respond to these calls, and also the continued training of CIT, which stands for Crisis Intervention Training. And this, this training provides techniques for law enforcement officers to work with people who are experiencing mental health crisis. And I'm happy to say that three-quarters of our department is, will be fully trained by the end of 2025, and in 2026, our entire department will be trained. So, we really committed to this training. So, beginning in November 2023, with the full support of the mayor, council, borough administration, an agreement was signed, and department policy was put in place for Madison to be part of the Arrive Program with three other towns, called the M-Towns, Madison, Morris Township, Morris Plains, and Madison, Morris Township, Morris Plains, and Marstown. I should know that, right? Due to us being in close proximity, and since Hanover Township have jumped, jumped onboard. So, you asked how the program works. There's two mental health clinicians, MHA mental health clinicians, that are assigned to the M-Towns, and they are assigned to each town on a rotating basis. We have one that works 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., one that works 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Anything that, any calls that are categorized in this Arrive, as an Arrive call, and the clinician is not working, obviously, the officer handles it as we would normally, and there's a follow-up, which I'll go over very shortly, that the clinician, that the clinician does. These clinicians are also housed in our headquarters. They have a workstation, they're right, they're right inside mingling with the officers. They're basically part of our department family. And I'm proud to have such a great partnership with MHA and the Prosecutor's Office in this endeavor. So, there's two main functions of the Arrive Program. There's the response, and as I mentioned before, the follow-up, and I'll just cover these very briefly. The response, just what it is, to provide individuals in crisis with whatever help that they need quickly and effectively, and that's by teaming up with an officer to address the, the mental health crisis that someone's going through. Next, there's the follow-up. The follow-up is where the Arrive, the Arrive Team not only handles a dispatch call with a crisis in progress, but then also follows up with the individual to ensure that they are doing well, they don't need anything additional, and they have the support that they, that they need. This focus approach supports both the individual facing a mental health crisis and also protects the officer responding to these calls. Historically, with mental health crisis calls, officers were being dispatched to the same residence on multiple occasions. We found that after the commencement of the Arrive Program, we've seen a lot less than this. Our, interestingly enough, our calls for emotionally disturbed person, EDP calls, decreased over 30% from 2023 to 2024 since we had the Arrive Program. So, this is actually going to be our second full year, 2025, second full year in this program. We also saw a decrease in use of force on these type of calls. After being involved in the Arrive and officers being CIT-trained, we have seen a dramatic drop of, of use of force on these calls. In 2024, we responded to approximately 100 Arrive-type calls, including responses and follow-ups, and there was zero use-of-force incidents with our officers. In all four towns, there were over 400 Arrive calls, so all the four M-Towns that are utilized in the Arrive Program, and there was only one use of force. So, I think it's pretty awesome. And lastly, I just want to thank the governing body and the borough administration for their continued support of our officers, our department, and our utilization of the Arrive Program.
Chief, a couple of comments, and we'll ask the council for some others, but certainly, this is a great story, which we've talked about this quite a bit. We had a workshop down at the league, we didn't have a great turnout, but I wanted to make sure we tell the story multiple times, because you are truly making a difference. And we've got a lot of people be watching this at home, and they should be really proud of your work, the work of your officers, and this partnership we have. Couple of the things that were shared, you know, I shared a friend's thoughts, what I, a mother who I know through my children, her son and my children were together in childcare. Her son now suffers from mental health issues and is off and on the street, and her biggest fear is getting that call someday, that the wrong person answered the door when there's a crisis. To know that there's a program such as this is so important. And I think we also talked at the conference about the two side of this, not to go into much detail, but I, it was shared about the one call that was a potential suicide by police, that, and the teamwork to de-escalate not only saved that person's life, but I can only imagine that if the officer had been forced to take physical action... and then to hear the story behind that person and why they were there, it would have been devastating to that officer. So we, we, it is such a strong program for everyone involved.
Yeah, it comes back to the training and, and, you know, for dealing with these types of calls that, you know, our officers can confidently respond to these calls and de-escalate the situation. I mean, that's our, obviously making this sure the scene's safe, but our priority is to, to not, we don't want to use force, you know, and to talk them down and, you know, we have great officers and they've really bought into this, to the, to the CIT program and the Arrive program. So, you know, we're doing great things out there and helping our residents.
Hey, chief, I can't thank you enough for pushing this forward and carrying it through. You know, 26 years on the ambulance, I responded to enough of them. And they are by far the toughest type of situation to be in. It's not only dangerous for the patient, it can be very dangerous for the first responders. This is a great step forward for everybody's safety and well-being. So thank you so much for this. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, chief, thank you. We, we certainly always sit here and think that we've got a lot to be thankful for in Madison and a lot to be proud of, and I think this is more of that. You know, certainly I think all of us are extraordinarily proud of the work that all the public safety team does here in Madison, whether it's fire, EMT, police. But this is something that I think we should be especially proud of. I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a fact that there's a mental health crisis in the country, and I think a lot of people fall through the cracks and then they get stuck in the community and you, you guys have to deal with them. So I think it's good that a program like this exists to make it so that those interactions with your team are safe for both them and you and your officers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
One more comment. You were commenting on the follow-up, too. So the follow-up is key. Our, our own staff does a follow-up and then hopefully directs these people.
Yeah, correct. You know, for years, and it, it was a process, you know, the, the individuals really weren't getting the help that, that they needed with, you know, they were sending them to the hospital and getting released, and we would go back, you know. So what's great about the follow-ups are now the Arrive clinician, they'd have a, you know, mental health clinician on scene at the initial call, the response, and then the follow-up is after the fact, hey, did everything go good? Are you getting the treatment you needed, the medication? Are you seeing, you know, are you seeing who you need to see? And as we said, as I said in the, the numbers, I just pulled them up today and I wish I had more for you, we're still compiling everything. But we saw a 30% drop in those type of calls from 2023 to 2024. And I fully believe that a, a big part of that is the follow-up, that those patients and individuals, residents, whoever, are getting the help that they need and they're not calling us anymore for that. So, you know, it's a, it, it, obviously, you know, it's working.
Lucky, we're lucky to have you.
It's working.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Just reinforce one other thing first, that, you know, the Arrive program eventually would have arrived to Madison, but it was you as chief that took a suggestion and reached out and researched that made it happen.
Yeah.
Had as part of a pilot program. So another thing to be very proud of. And one subtle other thing to be proud of is Attorney General Matthew Plaptin is a Madison product, a graduate of Madison High School. So thank you very much, chief, for taking the time and sharing this great program.
Thank you for having me.
Now we'll shift on to our parks master plan, Tom Solaki.
I don't know how I follow up to that, but.
Tom, parks are very important for mental health.
Parks are very important, and safe parks as well, so. So I'm here this evening just to kind of give a general update to the council. Some of you have been more involved than others. And so I just want to give a brief, I'll keep it under 15 minutes, but we're, we're moving along quite nicely. As we learned, you know, the process of public input takes longer. I think we had a pretty aggressive schedule in the beginning, and then we realized how long it took for people to respond and give us feedback and ask them again. So, but we're moving along and we should have things wrapped up this winter. So this is kind of just an update for you all. And so there's two, I should also say, the two, Phase One, which was the analysis, you know, information gathering, that is, Michael posted online, as is the Phase Two, which is more or less this booklet, which you're going to see tonight, which is the, jumping into the concept design, okay? So again, we're looking at Summerhill Park, Central Green, Livesey Park, and Del Barton. Right, those are the four parks identified. So this is, part of this presentation is what we showed to the public when we had our design review back in November. And so we went over with them talking about the different phases. So right now, we're in the Phase Three, you know, or Area Three, which is the concept design. So we've done the kickoff, Community Design Day. Once we get feedback from the public, what we're working on now is the final concept, and then we finally launch into the improvement plan. And so what we did, the inventory analysis, just to kind of give a overview, we looked at physical conditions, we talked about the peoples and places around the parks, vegetation within the parks and around, and the history of each park. And then, so we, using that information, we jumped into the public input. And this was during the summertime, some were able to make it. We had a very hot day, we did it, we were going to have it in the parks, but there were thunderstorms that day, so we moved into the courtroom. We had a really nice turnout for some, to get some community input. And how we did that was, we looked at, we had different, what we call public design charts. You can see here, we had different boards set up around the room, and we asked people different questions. We had a board that said picture preferences. And it was like, alright, of all these pictures, what do you see as a preference for your park? What, what do you, what intrigues you? What do you like to see in the park? Then we had a priorities board, and we had listed priorities, all different kinds of priorities. And you put a sticker on what was your most important, next important, third important. And the last one was this idea of love change, right? What do you love about the park? What would you like to see changed? We didn't want to say love-hate, so we did love-change because it was a little more positive. So we got a really, you know, you can kind of see some of the examples of the boards here. We got a lot of good feedback from that. And so overall, in the parks, we, you know, it was, the focus was really like, pedestrian trails was a picture preference, picnic benches and gathering spaces, seating, natural tree canopies, so there was a theme coming up, right? There was this idea of passiveness, there was this idea of nature. And that was for all four parks. And so the, the preference pictures for Summerhill, as you can see up top, people walking, trees with trails, a nice bridge. Livesey, same thing, picnic benches, areas to sit, signage. Del Barton Park, maybe like a more fun woodland-style play, but again, pathways, nature, Central Green, signage, pathways, seating. So, you know, we had these going on at four different times of the day, and this was kind of a, a big recurring theme throughout all of them. And then, so then we looked at priorities, and we said, what are, these are the lists of priorities. We said, you know, you know, accessibility, art, dogs, ecology. We kind of did everything, right? We didn't want to cover the gamut of what we were looking at then. And so Central Greens was ecology, walking, and passive recreation. There was playground safety and walking, ecology access, passive rec and ecology. So again, it's all the same thing, so I'm going to kind of go through this part a little more quickly. And then we looked at, this was the more difficult part. It's like, how do you categorize people's personal comments, right? So we found that it was super easy for us to read the comments and to learn from that as designers, but it's really hard to quantify that and put in a spreadsheet. So, but we were able to kind of put things in categories. And you could see here, like a big, you know, the love of Central Green, the natural beauty. The change is, we need to get rid of the debris and the weeds. We love the community adjacency of Del Barton Park, but we really need a playground that's not in disrepair. For Livesey, it was, you know, love the community adjacency, maybe remove the invasives. For Summerhill, it was a quiet nature, too many invasives and dead trees. And then we launched into the, the fun part, the design part. So we took all that information for the public, we took our analysis, right? And, and it's two separate elements, which is important because the community might come back to us and use this example, I think, whenever we meetings, like they want a skate park. But our analysis might say, you can't put a skate park in any of these parks for these reasons, right? So, but what the skate park comment tells us is they want a place maybe where teens can hang out and have a good time and play game, you know. So we, we can glean from that information of what type of space we can design. It might not be a skate park, but it might be something that's designed for that particular group of kids. There are some blank pages here because it's meant to be printed. So if anyone would like a printed copy, let me know. So I'll go quickly through here again, giving the overview of the designs, and then they're online, we can go into depth. And I am more than happy also to like host a separate meeting with any council member that wants to talk about it to get feedback. Okay, so again, for each park, you know, what we did is from the design board, this is what we presented to the public in our, in our follow-up meeting in November. And it was, we printed big boards out and we showed them that, you know, here's the analysis we were looking at, we were looking at the likability, walking to it. We showed them the analysis and the feedback that we got from the public. And then we gave them kind of a brief overview. So this is Central Green, so this gives an idea of where Central Green sits. And we talked about, you know, looking at the main entrance, the connection park. Again, this is the concept big level we went to the public with. We emphasized to them, like, this was the fun time, this was the time for them to like look at it, don't get, you know, don't ask questions like, what kind of brick are we going to use? And are the, are the benches going to be wood or concrete? It was more about like, do you want an entrance here or not? Do you want a trail there or not? Do you want more trees or less trees, right? So, so for, for Central Green, it was, it came down to, they just wanted really clean access. It's, it's a beautiful natural space, but it needs to be enhanced, it needs to be maintained. Even though it's, it's a woodland, it was never a woodland originally, so it's grown up with invasives. And there is a lot of debris, there's actually like a dumping ground back here for any of you who are up with your Madison history. All the neighbors are, so there's, might be a little archaeological dig in the north where it says add native understory. But the idea here was like, maybe we just do a simple, really clean trail that's easy accessible, easy to maintain, and then some more informal trails throughout. And we really focused on creating a healthy forest because that's what people loved there. And so we did some sketches for them to give them what that might look like, right? So this is coming in from down here, from Greenwood. Maybe it's just a clean trail with, with split-rail fence and some planting. Maybe we do a little informal log gathering with all the downed trees that are in there, around the trees, around the central tree. Maybe it's just a crossing over the dry stream bed there with some mulch trail. So a lot of it was simple elements that are enhancing what's there. And we got a lot of good feedback for this. Actually, it's funny because Central Green during the analysis or the first community input, not a lot of people. This was like the crowded poster. We had like every neighbor, I feel like, come, it felt like every neighbor at Central Green because like we love the nature, you know, they didn't want to do anything too much that was going to scare the birds away. But again, comments like that, it's like the trail, the people walking the trails won't scare the birds away, but if there's nothing for the birds to eat, that might scare the birds away. So it's, it's looking at the concern in a different way. So then we look at Del Barton. Del Barton was another great, you know, community involvement one where people were out and talking about what they wanted and didn't want. Same type of analysis, overview. And then Del Barton, we also looked at the larger context. So we have Del Barton Park, which is, you know, proper, down with the ball field and da-da-dah, you know, but there is all the municipal land that bleeds kind of behind DPW and behind Staples, which is over there. And some of the new memorial trails are proposed between the Staples and, and Del Barton. So we did want to look at the overall context, just to say like, this is a great community neighborhood park that's actually, if you were to link it to other areas, it's an amazing resource, not just for this Del Barton neighborhood, but for others as well. And accessibility is the hardest part right now. There's no parking there, there's, you know, there's street parking, but if you know it, it's very limited. But if we can have a really successful trail network, again, simple, not a huge intervention, but if you have a simple trail network that can connect to where other people live, right? We have the new housing going in front of Madison Green, what's the one, Madison?
Madison Mall.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, so we have a population that's over there that is underserviced by parks, but they're actually not, it's actually right here, there's just no formal connection, right? So, and then the next slide, we, we zoomed in a little more in-depth, you know, talking beyond that and saying, you know, a lot of the comments we got was about the playground. And maybe we just, you know, maybe the playground stays where it is because it's shaded, but maybe it's an appropriately-designed playground that can handle seasonal wetness because it's wet, it's like the lowest part of town. So there's no getting around that. But we actually got interesting comments about, you know, from some neighbors who are actually baseball dads and, you know, saying like, none of the Little League kids are going to hit into the outfield, they're never going to do it. So maybe we can activate that, and it can be, you know, he has said, maybe we put the playground there. We thought maybe we can do a picnic area as a central node. When families come for a Little League game, the little kids can be playing in the playground, maybe the mom and dad are on the picnic bench, and it just activates this park a little bit more. Simple interventions, pathways, this is probably the most programmed one that we're looking at because of the playground element, that was a big emphasis. Livesey Park, same type of analysis page. And so this was an interesting one because it, no one knows it's a park because it looks like someone's yard, because it was someone's yard. It was, it was a piece of property, right? And so again, though, this wasn't, you know, people weren't asking for big things. They just kind of wanted, there was a wet, a rain garden there that was kind of overgrown and weedy. They wanted it maybe to feel a little bit more like a park, but not necessarily activated. So maybe just creating new edges, creating more formalized areas for picnic, maybe creating a stronger connection to the school so that the school maybe can use it as, as a resource, right? So, you know, we looked at maybe actually pulling in a sidewalk, coming in from the existing sidewalk, up that slope there, still leaving access for maintenance and DPW, creating a picnic terrace, maybe creating an upper overlook where there used to be a structure. Because that, what's interesting is some of the foundations, if you've been there, are still there from the old structure, so it's kind of this like telling of history. We looked at this idea of maybe making like an ornamental orchard of like native witch hazel trees or something. So it's not an orchard in the sense of apple picking, but it's something that gives, it lends itself to this suburban formality. It won't look out of place, but it also starts to define the park and give it edges, but keeps it open because people like the openness up. We don't need a lot of trails up here because you can walk on the grass. And then Summerhill, Summerhill's, you know, the largest park in the, in the four here. Same type of analysis. A lot of this was just like, we love trails there, but they're not either well-maintained or they wash out, or they're not in the right area. Love the idea of a lot of reforestation, removing old trees, just circulation in general. And then we actually have two plans, we're going to zoom in a little more because it's so big. But this idea of, again, Summerhill's a huge park, and half, I bet half of Madison doesn't know it exists. So it's just a great, great, and that's actually a nice thing because it, no one wants it to be this big bustling thing. They want to go there as their own little central park to kind of go for warmth, right? But this enhancing of the access, you know, so we were kind of looking at like, how do you make the entrance on Ridgedale Avenue feel like a park entrance, you know, and have it be safe? So maybe we look at reconfiguring that. People were really drawn to this idea of the ruins that are there now, which are not very safe, but they're really interesting. And we're Rose City, and we have greenhouse ruins on this property. It's just a really wonderful opportunity. And so we kind of looked at that as this knuckle piece in the overall park. So, you know, 90% of the park is a forested trail woodland, and we have this kind of upper hill there, the Summer Hill, right? Where maybe we reactivate this, these greenhouse terraces, clean them up, make them safe, but not necessarily make them an event space. Maybe it's a reforestation project, but it's done so on a terrace element so people can actually experience the forest as you step down the hill. And then looking also trails, right? So a lot of the trails, the way they were laid out, weren't necessarily taking existing grading into consideration. So maybe reconfiguring trails and reworking certain trails, adding additional trails so you can actually do full loops. And then really quickly, we looked at two options of recommendations, again, concept level, recommendations of fixing the very interesting circulation of Summerhill, which is a one, it's not a one-rated, it's a two-way road, that is the size of a one-rated, smaller. So if you've ever driven into or through Summerhill, you realize that. But, you know, this option was looking at maybe turning the road into a one-way road as it is and coming up, having the parking all on the left side, on, on the same side of where the main activation is, having safe crossings, and having it come down all one way so that traffic comes in and through with trails connecting to it. And then the alternative, again, these, we're not saying you should build the last one or this one, we're just thinking of options, okay? This one is saying, well, maybe we actually make a, you know, a beefier two-way entrance on Ridgedale. And we increase, you know, maybe we have a traffic walk across to Burnett. And, but the idea here is you have a two-way entrance, it comes around, you loop it, you have a double stacked parking, and you can have a drop-off. you have a double stacked parking, and you can have a drop-off, and you can have a turnaround, and then we actually maintain the road off here, because it's kind of, it's used as a residence for the garages that don't have access, but the rest of the road maybe remains as gravel for fire emergency and DPW, but it's not necessarily a drive-through, because that is the most dangerous part, quite honestly, with trails crossing it, people using it as a cut-through, if you've ever been, they're zipping down the hill. So, again, looking at alternatives, and we actually got interesting feedback for both these, there was no preference, we would love to hear county engineering's thoughts on that, but the idea of trails and walkability and access was like the key thing for Summer Hill, so we feel like looking at trails is super important, but also looking at the vehicular circulation is just, and that is, a year's worth of work, and I don't think I was under 15 minutes, I'm sorry. But these are online to review, I can print any copies out if you let me know, I can, I can deliver them here, and I would love if you all want to get together and sit and talk more about it in one of the committee rooms, I'm happy to do that, you know, because this is a process, and we're in the final phase now where we've made our adjustments per the public comments, we're compiling our list of, you know, grant opportunities, and just saying, you know, feasibility studies and things like that, and then that launches us into the final recommendation, okay? So we're hoping to get that wrapped up within the month of February.
Lot of good work, and just for the record, you did it in 16 minutes, very well. Bob?
Yeah, first of all, it was magnificent the way you did this, not only with the way you got the input from the public, but now with these designs that you came up with. I don't know how the heck you drew all those, but they're amazing. Just a general question, the space behind the Madison athletic fields, that's a big open field, I don't know if it's in your scope right now, it's not listed in these, it's not, but would, would that be something that you might consider down the road?
I mean, there's, Madison, I think we last, I looked at, it was 222 acres of parkland we have, so there's lots of, there's lots of opportunities.
Tom would be more than happy to look at it. We wanted to, because of trying to be mindful of managing the process and coming up with a master plan, that could be delivered as opposed to overreaching, we kind of.
Yeah, and at the same time, these were actually, we've said before, like, these four parks, the public kept asking, like, why these four? I don't know why these four, but my, you know, post-rationalizing is that they're actually all very four unique parks.
Yeah.
Right? And we have other parks like each of those throughout Madison, so it's almost like setting up a framework for, like, do one for Livesey, we can repeat that in another park elsewhere in town that's similar to Livesey kind of a thing, which is nice.
I think it's a good, good point. Rachel?
Thanks, Tom. When you say, I don't know how you did that, the level of effort that Tom and his firm have put into this, I just want to say on a personal level, far exceeded the scope, their faith, their proposals. So, Tom, I want to thank you, I know you didn't like put me up to saying that, but it is, it is, it is like so evident that your love for this town and your love of, you know, designing beautiful landscapes for this town, it really shines through in this work, because it goes far beyond the scope as was conceived of in this proposal, and so I think we certainly chose the right firm to do the work. A lot of it was on your back, and I thank you for that, but it's great work, and congratulations on this presentation. And I want to say that, you know, I think we're a little out of order, you know, we just talked tonight about mobilizing for the trail construction for Phase Three trails in Memorial Park, but Tom's vision for it, that his firm's vision for it is like much better than our engineering plans for it. We did things a little backwards, we engineered the plans, we drew the trails, and then we had a landscape architect look at it and say, here's a great trail network, so, you know, I know that there's a grant we received to build the trails as they're drawn up right now, but I think it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't look at a way to incorporate some of your findings for the Del Barton adjacent trails into Memorial Park Trails Phase Three, which is a little, you know, it's not too far different from what you're showing, but it is different.
I think we have the Phase Three drawings as well, and I talked about that, so.
I hope that there's, this is sort of putting it out there, whether it's to our, you know, however we're going to manage this, I think we should see if there's a way that we can benefit from some of this great work and not construct something that's, that is a design that's not as good as what we would hope for, so.
Which is why you do a master plan, right?
Exactly.
So, and just another to reinforce, especially related to Del Barton and the trails there, one of the things that Complete Streets has recommended and we're hoping to do is, in a couple of areas, introducing three-way and four-way stops, and one of them would be on Niles, which is a cut-through, and it would be right at where you have that access to Memorial Park and that little green area midway up Niles, I think opposite Durwood maybe, but again, that shows how all these things can connect in getting people from point A to point B to enjoy our great green spaces.
I actually think, one of the residents mentioned is, we had that, you know, the map up, they were talking, well, you know, you start there and you can take that road to that park, and then you can take your bikes, and they're starting to connect all the pieces, and you can literally go from one side of Madison to the other, you know, we have safe streets in between them all, so it is actually a nice little, it's a mini emerald necklace, you know, we're not Boston, but aspire.
Listen?
Yeah, Tom, thanks so much, and I had the opportunity to join those public input sessions, and first, the, the, there were a lot of people there, and their input was so interesting, and also a wealth of history was shared there. So it was a great community gathering, and it just sort of shows that those gatherings also move into these parks, right? That's where they want to be, so I really appreciate you and your team being so open, and it was a fun process. It was not boring, it was all hands-on and really great. So little kids, two seniors were all there sharing their input, so I appreciate that, and absolutely, to Rachel's point, like, the connectivity is super important, so whatever we can do to help that, let's make it happen.
Other comments? There's some more work to come, and so, thank you very much.
You posted, alright, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And reminder that Tom has offered to spend more time if you have, want to sit down with him and get more input. Alright, we move on for ordinance hearing, and since this is the first meeting of the year, we have none, so now we're on to our second of invitations for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, the same meeting rules apply, as far as stepping up lecterns, state your name and address, try, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we give you that one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introduction to ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for January the 27th, 2025. It'll be posted in, it'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance one for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance one, 2025, ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting an amended redevelopment plan for certain properties located at block 3303, lot two, as shown on the official tax map of the Borough of Madison pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 48:12A-1 to 89.
Mayor, I move ordinance one dash 2025.
Second. Council discussion. So this, this is tweaking the redevelopment plan that was put together for what is known as Geralda One, as happens almost every time with any redevelopment plan, as you do the initial plan and it gets designed out, there's some modifications that have to happen to make it work. As sports analogy often goes, the team was great on paper, but they had to play the game on grass, and so it's the same sort of thing, the initial plan looked great, but it had to be refined to meet the needs of site such as grades and so on. Any other comments?
I'll just underscore that the adjustments are quite minor, so it's minor things that do not substantively change the scope or the nature of the redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergin?
Yes.
Mr. Rang?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Sonahan?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move resolution forty dash 2025 through R 53 dash 2025.
Second. Do that need to be polled, or any questions? Tom?
I just wanted to comment on forty-two, 2025, that hopefully this is the last year we have to renew with Chatham, in Chatham, and hopefully we get back, we get that back to Madison. Are we not on the resolutions yet?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the long-term plan is probably, we were hoping to continue the relationship with the, here's out of the Chatham, but with a.
New home.
In Madison.
With a new home, that's what I meant, Mayor, sorry, not to, not to stop the relationship. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor, just one from me, when it's time to vote on this, I'm just going to recuse myself and abstain from forty dash twenty-five. Forty dash twenty-two.
Oh, it's a name.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergin?
Yes.
Mr. Rang?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Sonahan?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, with that caveat on forty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, abstain.
Okay, if there is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher?
From the current fund, five million, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. From the general capital fund, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars, fifty-seven cents. From the electric operating fund, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars, forty-three cents. And from the electric capital fund, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars even. From the water operating fund, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. From the water capital fund, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, twenty-five cents. And from the trust, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. The total is six million, forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second. Question, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landergin?
Yes.
Mr. Rang?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Sonahan?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Under new business, I'd like to make the following appointments requiring council confirmation, and these are all Board of Education liaison appointments, one-year term through December 31st, 2025. Complete Streets, David Duran, EDC, Dr. Stephen Zindel. Emergency Prep, Kelly Browning. Recreation, Eric Fontes. And Sustainable Madison, David Duran.
Mayor, I move approval of the foregoing appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The injunctions is unanimous, thank you.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.